Bring up the next steps from the FCPS ON work session. These are the next steps, but I believe now that I've got you all at the table, I'm going to actually defer to our chair who's going to help us with the closed session.
In order to comply with Section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on October 14th, 2019, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Evans. All those in favor? That is unanimous with Ms. Palchuk away from the table. Oh, there she is. I'm sorry. Ms. Hines is absent today. Okay. Now I have, I'm calling on Ms. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who distributed drugs at school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Darrenak Kofax. All those in favor? That's Ms. Schultz, Ms. Palchuk, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Moon, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Kies-Gamara, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Those opposed? Mr. Wilson. Those abstaining? Ms. Evans. That motion carries. I now turn the board meeting over to Ms. McLaughlin.
All right, colleagues, as we talked about at the close of the session before the lunch break, that we're just going to look through the next steps for you to identify that the information you're requesting of the superintendent has been listed. He'll then review it with the chair and vice chair and determine if there's any follow-up questions he needs to bring back to individual board members regarding your request. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes. Number 85 is actually three separate. It was three different ones. One is provide data on the equity of access to the curriculum via differentiation with using the one-to-one. And the second one is regarding digital citizenship. Provide information on our digital citizenship curriculum and how we are engaging parents both in digital citizenship and digital literacy so that they can better participate in their students' learning process. So if we can just add, "so that they can better participate in their students' learning." On 86? 86, okay. I've got, let me do 86 first. So that they can better participate in their students' learning. And then 87. Provide data on the impact of the new cellphone usage policy on how students are using the network via their own devices. And please share that data with the Fairfax County Council of PTAs.
Yes, Ms. Loveglass?
We have data on how many have accessed, have registered and accessed our network. I don't have usage data of their cellphone information.
Okay, then access is fine.
Yes, and Ms. Loveglass, as the student noted, they'll sign in. It doesn't mean that while they're signed in, they've used it for all seven hours of the school day, so we, usage would not be very accurate.
I can just tell you how many cellphones we have registered by school, you know, at each high school or something like that.
That's great. And then number, the new 87 is Mr. McElveen?
Oh, 88. Right, so the year-to-year comparison, I don't need, because it's already in the report. I just want the opt-outs. But I wouldn't phrase it that way, that the, provide a list of opt-outs by school.
Ms. Darrenak Kofax, you're on deck. Can you read yours?
Yeah, it was larger, I was using Google Classroom, so maybe ensure that there are opportunities by pyramids for parents to learn and grow in the knowledge of online learning tools and strategies. Make it more general. Google Classroom should, of course, be included in that, but I think, let's just make it more.
You're almost saying digital literacy. Is that, would that be, is that good?
That's a better, that's a better term.
Okay.
And the knowledge of digital literacy.
Actually, Ms. Kofax, I read it differently. What you want to know is for parents to understand the digital instruction that's occurring in our schools. Digital literacy means, do they know how to use digital devices?
Well, I want both. I think it was both, because I was, I did give the example of me as a parent, not really under, that's where Google Classroom came up. I said, I wasn't exactly sure.
So you want to put digital literacy and digital instruction?
Yeah, let's do it that way, then. Because it's both. It's helping those of us who need to understand better on how to, how it works, but also what we are doing as a county.
So now we have 80, it's going to be 90 for Ms. Kies-Gamara. If you can read yours, please.
Yes, and the first correction I see is rather than special learners, it should be students with disabilities. And I think the two categories were students with disabilities and ESOL learners. ESOL, E-S-O-L, or? EL, there's. Students with disabilities and just put slash, you could put a slash and/or. There's a couple of ways, couple of acronyms you could use. That covers it.
So where you're saying we could provide better communication engagement with their parents, okay.
Would you, would you mind, because my question didn't get addressed, I don't think, but it fits in here, can we also add executive function? Because it's not just executive function for students with disabilities, monitoring the specific needs of each student.
Executive function after monitoring the specific needs of each student, including executive?
Including executive function.
Executive function, sure.
Including executive function.
Ms. Palchuk, your number 91.
Yeah, I don't know if it's the next step more than maybe let us know what professional development is available for teachers and consider options for full staff.
So provide information about additional opportunities for teachers and full staff for professional development.
So I think there were two. I think it sounds like for teachers, we do have, I don't know if it's every school, but at many schools, choice for professional development currently. And then it looks like Dr. Ivy was going to look into the possibility of having, the way we did for the equity training, full staff training for FCPS ON in the future.
Okay.
And then, and then consider possibilities for future. Is that correct? Okay.
Ms. Evans?
Is it clear, I mean by elementary, middle, and high?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Moon? Okay, do we have anything after 95, 94?
Well, hang on a second with, if there isn't, I had more specific budget.
I know, I thought you had meant several more. So that's why we're doing this. So why don't we, Ms. Evans, since we have you on deck, let's go with what are the other next step questions you don't see listed there? Because you, you were all in a row.
For the, for the budget questions, I wanted to see a total number, the, the total amount when FCPS ON is fully implemented, what the cost would, would be by level, high school, middle school, elementary school. The total cost, you know, to, to implement it by level and by year. And I also wanted it broken down by how we were doing it. We bought some devices for high school and we leased some devices, so I'd like it broken down that way as well. By year and, and by, by method, right, and.
Method of purchase?
Method of purchase, or method of purchase or lease, yeah. Method of purchase is correct. Method of acquisition.
Yeah, method of acquisition is good.
Purchase or lease.
Yes, Ms. Schultz?
How, I don't know if there's others, how are you accepting the ones that didn't get included?
That didn't get there. I, I, right. I, I thought what we would do is just continue through whatever this list of what's up here, and then we'll go back and add in. So Ms. Evans happened to, we're on her turn, so I thought we'd capture it, but this way we'll see what else, what has been listed there. So, Ms. Evans, you now have all of yours captured? Okay. So. For example, I think I had four, four or five. Next steps, I, the online textbook information. You know, I, I think just wanting to understand where, where are we in terms of online text versus hard copy textbook usage in our curriculum delivery? I had also asked that we were going to get more information about the middle school pilot? As well as other middle school digital, one-to-one digital device programs at the national level. Oh. Other, middle school, digital slash one-to-one device programs. I had also echoed Ms. Evans' request that we look at incorporating more digital literacy and digital citizenship in our health curriculum. And finally, to work with the superintendent in scheduling pyramid-wide. Yeah, I was saying pyramid, yeah. I was thinking district-wide. I would say pyramid nights, just say pyramid nights on digital citizenship. We'll jump to Ms. Kies-Gamara. You have one there at 93. Yours is provide information on the impact of programs on isolation, how we're addressing ensuring parents and students have a way to communicate.
I think that's more than one. It's two different topics in there.
Okay.
What, what, all right, so we're on 98. Is that where we are? Okay. Provide information on the impact of the program on isolation of our students. That's one. And then the next one is, how are we addressing and ensuring that parents and students have a way to communicate regarding concerns for this program? I think that's a different one. I take out the "and" and start with "how." Okay, that would be 99.
So yours is going to be how are we addressing parent and student concerns?
Communications, to make sure that they have a way, a method of communicating directly with our staff regarding their concerns. Because I know sometimes we can get bogged down if we have too many steps. And then.
So I would take out addressing, just to make it, just say, how are we ensuring parent and students have a way to communicate with us about digital citizenship?
Okay. And then I think.
And a bridge to the SRNR.
Yeah, I think that's separate. That's what the, our student, Stefan, Stefan, I believe was his name, suggested, which I thought was excellent, that we look at implementing our digital citizenship and aligning it with our SRNR. I can't take credit for that one, but it was, it was good.
So Ms. Evans, we can delete 101 because we caught it there, okay? And Ms. Schultz? Oh, Mr. Wilson, my apologies.
That's okay. So, so 100 also has multiple topics in there. So the first one is provide data on college readiness rates and other measures of academic achievement to see whether there's a beneficial impact.
Correlation.
Or correlation between the implementation of FCPS ON and academic achievement. Right, so that, so 101 would be to provide a report on FCPS ON in the area of special education instruction. It's a third, there's a third one up there, and then I, there's another one that is not up there yet either. So this is, this one, I think it's actually provide information on the number of students with FCPS computers who opt to use their personal computer at school.
Is that different than the opt-out question?
Right, so the opt-out is they didn't take a computer.
So we can tell you how many people, similar to the cellphones, BYOD and bring a device in, but how much they use that versus using their FCPS ON device, I wouldn't be able to tell you that.
Right, so we'll, so I think.
I can at least tell you how many BYOD for school.
I think that's useful. I think William was indicating that there are, you know, certainly more than one student at Oakton High School who are choosing to use their own device, but also taking a Fairfax County device. So I guess the.
Well, he could have shown you in his lap backpack, he had both. He had his FCPS ON and his, so he's, he might use one for one class, one for another class.
Right.
I would have no way of knowing that.
So, so is there a way to know whether or not FCPS-issued computers are logging on during the day or are not logging on? By like, you know, just so you have an indication, you, let's say at Oakton, you, you issued 2,700 computers, but only 2,350 log on at school each day. That might be a proxy for what I'm trying to get at.
We'll look and see what possibilities are, because they also might not log in on that day because the teachers aren't using them that day. I mean, I, you know, you, see what I'm saying?
I think you understand my question.
I can at least tell you how many are BYOD. Both, have both, I guess, I don't know. We'll see what we can get. We'll give you everything we have, but I, we'll see what we can get.
I think, I think you understand my point, Ms. Loveglass, which is, is to try to refine our information so that we understand how many computers are we issuing that are not being used, right? And that's obviously a way we can find a savings if we allow parents to say, hey, you don't, you know, here's one option if you really want to use your own, or a child wants to use their own, you don't have to take this computer. Maybe we allow them not to pay the activities fee, that sort of thing. So what I want to understand is, are there schools, are there pockets where we have kids who are, because of their circumstances, able to use their own computer, and they prefer that? And so they maybe have their secondary commitment. Maybe they want both computers, as you say, but maybe they're taking the computer at the start of the school because they feel like everybody's taking a computer, so I might as well take one too. And, and I think, you know, we need to be, as much as possible, disciplined in our issuance of laptops.
So I think, Mr. Wilson, what I'm hearing you saying is that the concern is we don't want to be issuing these laptops that are just dormant, and they are costly, and if they sit dormant for a year, that's one year of, the software might get outdated, but the machine itself wasn't even used. So is there just a more efficient, effective way?
Yeah, I think 102 actually sort of gets to the question.
Yeah, I think, we can get that information, Tom.
And so then, what's, what I don't see up there is, I had actually requested to see whether there was a way, because now we have all of our high school students with the laptop, since we know we have schools where we have, you know, different offerings available because of the number of kids who are able to take courses or interested in taking courses, where there's a way we can pool kids across multiple schools to allow them to take courses through an online learning where they, they are together online in a classroom to take a class with a teacher. So maybe this is just.
So can, consider expanding access to FCPS online curriculum for kids?
Well, I don't know that it's directly online curriculum. It's actually with a teacher in a, in a group setting where it's a, where it's a virtual classroom. That's what I'm getting at, is, have we looked into that? And I think with, with the FCPS ON at the high school level, there's a way we could have that virtual classroom set up to allow kids at schools to take classes, maybe there's only four or five kids.
So look at the use of virtual classroom using FCPS ON.
So the example is our student Kimberly, who talked about at Lee High School, she's not able to take the calculus course. So she'd have to then go to an academy or lose time going to another school site. Mr. Wilson's point is she could stay in Lee High School, not have to leave the building. But she and several Lee students who all want to access calculus could get into a virtual classroom set up with wherever it's being taught nearby.
So we'll look at FCPS virtual classroom using FCPS ON.
And this is not a new model. I mean, there, there are dozens of online providers now that high school students are taking classes with kids across the country, and they're logging onto their computers at home and joining in virtual classrooms.
And I think, Mr. Wilson, the school board folks probably want your language rather than mine, so that it's reflected appropriately.
Well, maybe it's, you know, look at adding virtual classrooms to address gaps in available curriculum at high schools.
Can I offer that additional virtual classrooms? Because there are virtual classrooms today at a number of our high schools. So for example, multi-variable calculus is one of those classes that we have had, haven't had enough students, so they join in with others.
That's right. This is in addition to what we already have in terms of our online learning to enable kids to take classes. So, and then the, the other question that's not up there is, oh, maybe that, maybe that's already up there, okay.
Ms. Schultz?
So I had a request for the detailed information on the protection of student privacy. And I appreciate that the fact that there was the explanation that you included the agreement with Google. I think that we need to understand why that works, especially since Google was just fined, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars, and actually billions of dollars in the aggregate with the violation of generally people's privacy, but specifically last month they were fined for child privacy. And then also a list of the, the digital content, either vendors or providers, and how we're, how, what the relationship, so. It's one thing to protect, have that agreement with Google, but we have, I mean, my own school alone, for one child, was asked to create 14 different digital vendor accounts through his Google account. And that's a, not just, you know, that's not a high school student, that's a minor child. So my question is how, with, what is the list of additional digital vendors beyond, that are exterior to Google, that there's no nexus between our agreement of privacy with Google, and now we've got all these other digital content? Either they're specifically vendors, or digital vendors, or providers? Digital content vendor, digital content vendors or providers? Digital content vendors or providers? Don't need accounts. And how FCPS is addressing privacy through those, is addressing privacy with those, with them? And I, I just want a clarification on when we're saying, because several people have said the total cost, are you going to include in the total cost, not just a cost, but you're going to include for us an idea of the scope of the number of employees that we've had to add to attribute? I mean, I don't want just a cost, I want to know what, what the employee, because there's, there's the cost of just, not just salary, but benefits, and then retirement. There's lots of, you know, sort of the nexus.
We have the position cost. We can include that.
Okay.
Ms. Schultz, can, when you talk about the privacy piece or the digital content vendors, another piece to that is also the vendors that we're using and the terms of that usage. So I know that a number of parents have raised concerns about my school box this year with the change to their contract, which now retroactively requires mediation and arbitration rather than going through the court. Is that what you're also aiming to get at?
No, I really, really, the, the problem in the space with Silicon Valley and joint venture capital money that is creating all this digital content, and, you know, Google is now no longer just a medium. They're, they're creating curriculum.
Right.
And, and so everybody is creating curriculum because they want to have access to educational dollars. Why do they want to have access to educational dollars? It's, they want access to student data. That's the entire nut of it. And that's why, you know, Google and Facebook and YouTube owned by Google have been fined billions of dollars. The whole thing is about the protection of children, and, you know, we've been in closed sessions. We understand that the issue is, is that our, our students are being driven to technology through, education through technology. Except every, there's, you know, for every child on this side, there's 50 engineers on this side, as busy as it describes. So I want to know what the mechanism is, not only of Google, but these others, what our relationship is to secure student privacy as we drive children to all these digital content vendors? And what, what, what are we doing to secure child privacy? We say at the table, and it was said, well, that's the parent's responsibility to control. No, it's not. We're the ones that are creating it, and now it's being suggested that we push it down to middle school, down to children who are 11 and 12 years old.
Ms. Schultz, you, you are echoing what many of us said during the three-hour session. We are in agreement that this board wants to know what is our privacy agreements with Google and any other vendors, and more importantly, how do we then communicate that out to the public? Because I, what I will add on to 106 is, we need to have a legal briefing on whether there is any connection at all to the Google fine and how that impacts our use of Google products and services in the classroom. Because the.
That's an excellent add-on.
Okay. How FCPS is addressing privacy, comma, and provide a legal briefing to the board about the relevance of the recent Google fines with respect to collecting student data? Fine, fines, like, it's like a penalty. Yep, no worries. Yep. With respect to student data. Student user data, sorry. The very last one that wasn't captured, I know from mine, was, what is the plan for delivering instruction on keyboarding? Especially if we're moving down to middle school? And then, Ms. Evans, you said you had something?
I just wanted to go back to number, I'm sorry if I missed this, but a number 104, and, and I didn't quite understand what we were asking for there. Ms. Schultz? The provide information on the distance parents feel from the curriculum. What are you looking for?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, that's not perfect, but the, with regard to the parent engagements survey that we did, the, the red areas, or the dark orange areas were predominantly questions that talked about how parents feel a disconnect between what their children are learning, and so this is maybe refining or having staff figure out, we know that Google doesn't allow parent accounts, so there's a reason why that's red and orange, so we've got to somehow connect what, why parents are disconnected with the fact that they don't have access to the curriculum through the Google accounts, what is it that is the problem, and how is it that we're going to resolve?
So, is, is what you're really looking for methods of enabling parents to access the curriculum, is that what you're actually?
Well, I, I think we need a further refining of what the problem really is, of understanding why, what those orange and red questions were in the engagement survey, and then connecting, that, I think, my assumption, but I don't want to be the one making the assumption, my assumption is, because that we've gone to more online format, there's, there's got to be some correlation to the fact that parents can't have, I mean, it's professed that parents don't actually have a right to the Google accounts because there's student proprietary rights to their own work, well, that's preposterous, it's preposterous to think that a parent can't know what their children are learning on a Google account, so there's, there's, we have a problem in the disconnect between what parents know is happening on this and what happens in our classrooms, and it showed up in the family engagement survey, so I think we've got to figure out a little bit, they've got to do a little bit more refining of the understanding, and then we've got to come up with a solution on connecting parents to what their children are learning better, I mean, it's, it's, it's not an easy, this is not an easy one.
I, we understand, we understand, we understand the intent of the, the next step.
Madam Clerk, I would just have it say, provide information to the board about concerns related to rental disconnect? Well, I think it was based on the parent engagement survey, they felt a disconnect to their children's curriculum, their-
If I may, though, that was the point of my follow-up motion, to alleviate that.
And yours, I thought, is that we, parents want to understand what does digital citizenship and digital literacy look like, Ms. Schultz is saying, what, what are we going to do to address that parents, their children have a laptop, they come home, and the parents are trying to figure out even how do you help your child with learning?
Because that should be helping, we should be instructing parents on how to do that, and that's what I see in part of those regional, you know, information sessions, that's the way I see it.
So, the big thing is, Dr. Brabran, if you, you can combine Ms. Darnett Kofax and Ms. Schultz's, I think you know where we're going.
Yes, we're going to take all of your feedback.
I know, you relish it.
We're, we're going to take it all, and, and I would say, I think we're about to wrap up, we, we do have folks here for Project Momentum that we're very excited to share our work and efforts around that, just as we have FCPS on.
So where, where is Mr. Greenfelder? Well then, come on up to the table, and we'll switch over.
Actually, we do not, we do not need three minutes.
Email him at this point.